I am Julie Alexander and we are continuing our City Council at Large candidates for the year 2021. Today I have with me Mr. Jeremy
Brzicki.
Jeremy Brzicki. Jeremy Brzicki is running for City Council at Large, as I stated. We're going to talk to Jeremy and we're going to find out about Jeremy. Let's find out, who are you Jeremy?
Well sure, just to start out, you know, the boilerplate stuff, my name is Jeremy Brzicki. I'm 38 years old. I live over in the Marquette Gardens neighborhood of Joliet. I've been living there a little bit, over seven years now. I was originally born in Hammond, Indiana, spent most of my life in Northwest Indiana. So it's funny that you mentioned trains.
Right.
Griffith is like, Griffith where I lived, spent most of my life. It's kind of like the center point, so many trains. So that was a big thing in the town is, you'd always get stuck by a train. So it kind of, it kind of brings me back a little bit.
Remind you to a home by getting stuck by the train here, okay.
Usually in my experience is getting stuck by the bridges. But you know, it's, I got a new refreshing experience. But anyway, where I'm from Northwest Indiana, very blue collar neighborhood, was very much supported by the steel industry back in the day. Ever since then, it's, it's gone down a little bit, but it's still, you know, it's still very, it's very similar to Joliet in a lot of ways. That's why, probably one of the reasons I feel so home here, because I come from a place that's very similar to Joliet. I got my bachelor's and master's degree at Lewis University in Ramialville, which is kind of my first exposure really to Joliet. So I was kind of familiar with the area pretty far before I moved here. But that's where I also met my wife. We've been married for 12 years, Emily. Hi Emily. I have two boys, one eight, his name is Max, and one five, his name is Owen.
Oh, okay, Emily, you have your handful of three men in the house, no? Okay, so is this the first time you've ever run for an office? Or have you ran before?
I ran for precinct committeeman in the last major election. But I mean, in terms of like overall office size, this is way bigger than that.
Yeah, but you still ran.
Right, for sure.
Okay, so what's your passion? What do you expect to attain out of when you get on this seat?
You know, I really want, what I want most of all is I want to bring the voice of the people back to the government. I don't want, I don't want my perspective to overview everyone else's. I don't want any specific group or special interest to have the only say in Joliet government. So that's really the perspective I want to bring. Cause that's really kind of how I approach most things is, try to get a uniform, try and get a uniform perspective, obtain perspectives of both sides. And really from there, make the most educated decision and decision that can be, that can be for the best of the community.
Okay, and with saying that, then what's your platform?
Well, I'm running on three major points here. First of which is to revitalize Joliet. So I want to, I want to grow the amount of high paying jobs in Joliet. I want to diversify our economy. I don't want to be centered around any one thing in particular, whether it be warehouses, casinos, or whatever. I think we need to have a multifaceted economy and that will take advantage of the large skillset that we have here in Joliet, as well as our diverse workforce. We've got a lot of people here that are experienced at doing a lot of different things. I think we really need to leverage that. I also want to promote resources, infrastructure in our underserved communities, whether that be on the east side, the south side, the far west side. I really want to make sure that everyone in our community has an equal chance to succeed. And that our, that all different areas of the community have, have representation that they feel listens to their concerns.
Great.
I also want to ensure, I want to build, I want to grow responsible construction. I want to obviously build our city. But I want to also make sure that we're taking advantage of some of the advantages our city already has, which is we have this really classic infrastructure. We have a, we have a city center too, like not a lot of places have that. I've grown up in communities that don't have a downtown, you know? It is a little bit, it is a little bit less of an experience living there when you don't have a gathering place, so.
Yes, yes. So those are, those are all, all very good points. However, you know that in the city, we have an array of things going on.
Yes.
And some are big issues and some are not so big. So we're gonna, let's cover a few of those, a few of those issues. But before I do that Jeremy, where do you see the city being in the next 10 years, 10, 15 years?
I think that kind of depends upon, I hate to put a lot of stress on this election, but I think a lot of that is how this election turns out. What kind of representatives we get in? And what kind of representatives get in the upcoming elections? What's, that's all going to be determined by what is the, that's, they're going to determine the vision for the city going forward. So I, I think that we have the opportunity to do so much. I mean, there is so much industry that we are at the center of, that we have the opportunity to take advantage of with proper planning, reinforcement, and representation.
Okay, let's say you're in that seat.
Okay.
Okay, and so now let's see that vision a different way, because you're in that seat.
Well, I want to, honestly, the first thing I would do, the first thing I would do.
First hundred days, right?
Yeah. It's kind of getting idea of what we're, what we're working on and what we're doing. If you've been on the Joliet website, there are tons in commissions and boards and plans that we've started and stopped, or that we haven't started yet. Like there's a lot of things that we've put into place that we just haven't continued with, or that we need to start putting in place. So I mean, we did a quality of life study in 2005. We stopped doing meetings on that a long time ago. We, we never did a whole comprehensive city plan. So we really need to start looking at what we've done and what we need to do. I know it's a very general statement, but honestly, every time, whenever I carry out my job, a big part of that is going to places and kind of getting a feel for the environment. Now, I'm not going to pretend that myself as an outsider, but I know everything that's going on.
Absolutely.
I'm not, I'm not that overconfident.
Yes, yes, I understand.
So that would be my first thing going is, get a temperature of what's going on, what's plans have been started, and what do we need to kickstart? And get going to really start developing Joliet and start making Joliet a more equitable and prosperous place.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Okay, so let's move on to a couple of the, we, we know we talked, but one of the big issues are the trucks, the warehouses and, and all these things. You know, along with progress comes regress. Unfortunately, our regress is our roads, our infrastructures that is being just mutilated. And there is supposed to be North Point coming in, which is going to bring in more trucks. Tell me, what say you about that?
You know, I am, I have been opposed to North Point for a couple of years and I can, I remain that way. And a big part of that is the fact that we haven't done a comprehensive truck route, truck route planning structure. We haven't come up with any designated truck routes. And we haven't reinforced the routes that we're currently using a lot of right now. So we have this situation to where we have these enormous warehousing developments that are coming in. And that are, besides North Point, more warehouses are coming in.
I think so, yeah.
But the traffic's being put onto two lane roads. We're creating natural bottlenecks, which as I know very well, and I'm sure we all do, you can't, you can't make a bottleneck even worse without at least trying to mitigate what we have going on right now. We need to push Illinois, if IDA is the ultimate responsibility, we need to push and reinforce our representatives to grow funding for our, for our roads and to expand the roads and repair the roads. And not to mention, we need to have designated truck routes so that we can keep the trucks off of our residential roads so that we don't have tons of trucks interacting with tons of buses, ambulances, kids. I mean, it's my worst nightmare. Having something happen to, having something happen to somebody because of too many trucks on the road.
There is talk about the spike in the water crisis. You know, we have teamed up with Chicago, collaborated with Chicago to get our water sources from Michigan. What's your take on that?
Well, honestly, in terms of the way the agreement was made, I didn't like how, I didn't like personally, how all the options were narrowed down as far as they were. I thought there were some other options that we should have pursued. I don't like when you have to pursue a unilateral agreement or a binary agreement with, with a large entity like Chicago. Like, for example, we could have come in with way more bargaining power if we had combined ourselves with other communities at the outset. But instead, we decided to go it alone, against Chicago. So now we're in a spot. So I think what we really need to do is we need to rebuild our relationships with our neighboring communities. And we need to get more people onto this water plan now. And we, so that when we start building, we need to, so that when we start building, we can start deferring the costs. Because obviously, the more partners you have on a plan, the lower the price goes. And Allison Swisher of the Water Commission indicated that. But we should have been doing this a while ago.
Okay, well, a lot of people feel that eventually our bill is going to spike relatively high. A lot of people are afraid of that. And you, you're saying it's true, explain to me why you say that.
Well, I mean, look at the fact that we have this massive construction project, right? And then from there, we're taking water from another community or from the city of Chicago, who is going to charge us a rate higher than we would be paying for our own water. So what I don't, what I want to do is I want to, we need to understand that's a threat and we need to work right away at stopping that. So Caesar Guerrero talked about price caps. I didn't, I think we need to pursue federal help for the, for the pipeline construction project. We, we should not have to go this alone. Our community, like Joliet, we can't run into debt, like that's not something we can do. We need to pursue federal help for the construction of the pipeline. We need to pursue more partners for the, for the water so that we can defer the cost of this and bring it down as low as humanly possible. Because like Shorewood, in terms of all the surrounding communities that are already drawing off that aquifer, we need to bring them on to our, to us. And that's going to be part of, we need to improve our relationships with them and work collaboratively. I think that's the best way forward, but we also need to pursue as much federal help as we can. We're not the only community struggling with this.
Well, I know that on the forum, you were on the Will County Democratic Black Caucus forum.
Yes.
And, and you did speak on that forum of reaching out to get grants or what have you. Was that you that, that talked about that?
Yes.
Okay, and so, so expound on that a little bit.
Well, I think, and I don't want to take another candidate's talking points, but as Hudson mentioned, we don't have a really good advocate for us in Springfield. We don't have a good advocate for us in Illinois, honestly. We really need to have reps that are pushing for us and pushing for as much federal help in Congress as we can get it. Because this is, this is a bigger issue than just Joliet. This is the whole area.
Yeah, right, right.
And I hate to say it this way, but I feel like Joliet only gets attention when something's, when like a terrible accident happens here, or this water crisis happens. We, we're the third largest city in Illinois.
Yeah.
We need to get some love down here.
I agree with you. Okay, so moving on to some of the other issues. Now we have the, the police issue that's going on. First of all, I would like your take on the body cams and the tasers. Do you think that the police should have body cams?
Absolutely. I actually read the proposal for it. And I, I'm going through it in my mind, so I'm trying to read it like a project manager would read it, like what can happen, what are the circumstances that an officer could turn it off? And what would happen if they did? I like most of the aspects of the proposal. I haven't found anything that really concerns me yet, aside from there's nothing specific as far as what discipline means, if it gets turned off or the footage gets deleted. I'm sure they'll refine that down, but that is something we need to keep an eye on. But absolutely, to protect our good officers, which we have many of them, and to protect the citizens, we need to have body cams.
Okay, so they do, it needs to be transparent. Well, to my understanding, they voted the tasers.
Yes.
Versus the body cams.
Yeah, they put, they authorized the use of the tasers. But wasn't it just the batteries over the, the taser replacements as well? In training, over the body cameras.
Okay, okay, and so do you think that the police should be defunded?
No, I don't.
And why?
You know, honestly, I think it's a matter of, I think that there's a lot of aspects of the defund movement that are good. But end all be all is, we need to make sure that our police feel supported, but we need to also make sure that the citizens are feeling supported. I know this feels like hedging.
Yes, yes.
But in reality, I think that a lot of different things that the, the other communities have done, like in Colorado, they, they've been sending mental health professionals out along with the police in situations that might not require a use of force response. I think that's a great idea. I think building up our, our community policing effort, as long as we, we really invest into it and as long as it's productive, I think that will be a great thing for the city. And I also feel strongly about body cameras and I've also feel very strongly about a police oversight board. I've actually been working with the council people on that. I attend all the meetings over it. That's a really big priority mine, whether or not I get in as a councilman, I really want this to happen. And it's encouraging that it seems like the council people that are on the commission, they want, they want it to happen too. So it's a matter.
So what would this board do? It's an oversight board, so what would they oversee?
Essentially, what they would oversee is if there was a situation involving use of force, possible discrimination, or if there were parts of, parts of laws or police procedure, that would be, that would be the oversight board review, would have the ability to review that. Then from there, they review all the evidence, including like body cam footage, witness statements, police reports. And then from there, they would issue a recommendation to the chief, who would then be required to respond to it. At the very start, an oversight board would be a really good step forward. Cause I think honestly, one of the big reasons I'm against the funding is, I think we have, we definitely have a crime problem here in Joliet.
Yes.
And I think it's important that we keep focus on that, while at the same time recognizing that a lot of the reason that we have high crime in Joliet is lack of opportunity, lack of equity, and lack of relationship with the police. I think that we can improve that without defunding the police.
Okay, so excellent. So there's, there's even more Jeremy, let's talk about the bridges. You know, the bridges, where our Jefferson Street Bridge, that's the main street that's, you know, headed to our downtown, where we want to grow our downtown and we want people to come there for business. However, it's, we have a bunch of one-way streets and so it makes it very difficult to maneuver. So tell me, tell me your take on that.
Well, I think it's honestly ridiculous that we're waiting this long. I mean, the bridge looks beautiful up.
Yeah, it really does, hasn't it, yeah?
It's good to stay, it buys you time to look at that beautiful bridge up. But you know, it should go down as well, I think, you know? But honestly, it's, I think it comes down to, I know IDA owns the bridge, but that's not really an excuse. In the end, it comes down to, this is dividing the city of Joliet. This bridge being up. And the other bridge is getting stuck up as well. So we need to push federally, I mean, at least push at the state level. For why exactly is IDA taking so long getting this done? I mean, in my side, when we have a parts issue, when we have an issue that's keeping a customer without having their truck, we push on, I'll push on the factory, I'll push on my bosses. And what it comes down to is, you put whatever, however much pressure you need and however many directions you needed, to get it done. The fact that they have to forge the part is not an excuse. It still comes down to the fact that our city is cut in half because of a bridge, because of a part, because I don't think we're following up aggressively enough to get that done. I mean, utilize every resource possible.
Absolutely. And get it done. Well, cause it does put hurt on our city and it does put hurt on downtown, in which we're trying to grow. And speaking of downtown, you know, the city center is coming along. We have a ways to go, but we've come a long way. So what's your take or what's your idea to bring more businesses into the downtown area?
Well, I think first of all, we need to actively engage our businesses a little bit more. I was, I was walking along downtown last weekend and I was talking with a lot of the business owners there. And they mentioned they haven't seen a rep. They haven't seen anybody come through and ask them what their, what their struggles are and what they think would help drive business to the city. And I hate to be accusatory in this way, but that's the truth. And I think we can be doing a lot more to engage our businesses and kind of seeing exactly what, what makes them tick, where is their business coming from? What would they like to see in the downtown? And I think honestly, getting everyone together, develop, and developing a little bit more of a plan for what downtown should look like and what the businesses would like it to look like, would be a good step forward.
All right, so do you think that we need more restaurants and more?
I'm always going to be for more restaurants.
Why, you like eating, right?
I love you.
Okay, so Jeremy, is there anything, well, actually, what do you have there in front of you?
Oh, this is, these are just my flyers right here, you might see them at the, you might see them on your doorstep.
Okay, and what do they say?
Basically, it just goes through my general point, my general platform. But it's, it's among three general points, revitalize, protect our resources and people, and engage our people. I mean, I'm a very strong advocate for public lands, so I'm a really big fan of parks. I'm a really big fan of Mid-Awin. I love Mid-Awin. And I'm a really big fan of just generally how our cities, how our cities designed that you can go anywhere in the city, you'll get a completely different experience.
That's true.
But I think we really need to stand up for our, for our natural resources and make sure that whatever plan we put forward, that it is, also keeps those resources in line. So we can't be, if we have businesses coming in, they should be leaders in environmental design. If we have, they should also make sure that they're not using too many of our resources without paying for it. Like water is a big one. What's their, what's their plan for protecting the neighborhood around them? In the case of them being, if they're located in the urban area? Or are, how are they going to protect the natural resources around them? Buffer zones, all that stuff.
And speaking of neighbors, and that brings to mind our housing situation, in our homeless situation. Give me your take on that. What is it that, that Joliet can do? What do you think? What would you pose or propose to do for our homeless here in Joliet?
You know, honestly, I think we need to do a little bit more support to Daybreak and Morning Star. We've put a lot on them. There's two we have, they're entirely on the east side. Daybreak had to shut down due to COVID protocols. And that leaves one effectively, one resource in the third largest city of Illinois to help the homeless. And I think we're seeing that, we're seeing that pan out now with, you know, the homeless at Kmart, homeless around the neighborhood. And I don't think honestly, anybody's got the greatest solution to this. But whatever it is, we have to make sure that there's a path to housing. And that we are providing resources to the homeless where they are too. So I mean, we've already spoken about the bridges. We've already spoken with how this connected, one side of the city is from the other side. So we have homeless on the west side that have no access to the resources on the east side. So we really need to, really need to take a really more holistic strategy to the homeless. And I know the mayor said that we need, the other communities have to do better with the homeless as well. You know, support their homeless communities, and I can't disagree with that. But that doesn't mean that we can abdicate our responsibility. But I think honestly, that for the most part, we all want the same thing. We want to have a safe and prosperous community, whether you're on the east side, or the west side, or the south side. So I mean, the needs for the community are going to be different, depending where you are. If you're on the east side, a lot of places you don't have, you don't have access to a grocery store or you don't have sidewalks or streetlights. So that's going to need to be fixed. But on some other sides, maybe your police response is too long. Maybe you don't, you haven't seen your rep for a long time, you don't know how to reach him. There's a lot of different things we can do, but I think the part, the biggest part is, make sure that we have representative government that, A, make sure that they communicate what they're doing in a way that everyone can understand. And B, that they're willing to listen to different perspectives. And going out and seeking different perspectives.
Okay, well, you know the city receives TIP money, right?
Yes.
And so, tell me what, what's your plan for that TIP money?
CARESAC funding or TIF money?
TIF money.
Oh, okay. I think honestly, we should be using it intelligently. I know we have TIP districts in the city. And I think that they're in the right place for the most part. But I think that we should make sure to use our incentives in a way that are actually driving, driving forward our plan and making sure that businesses that we want in the city are coming in. And when they come in, that I think a big part of that should be, are you paying your employees a living wage? Are you creating, are you taking care of the environment? What is your, what is your strategy? Are you an environmentally fast-forward company? Are you going to modernize our city? Those are the questions I would ask with any kind of incentive.
Okay, okay. So Jeremy, I have one more question for you. When you obtain that seat as City Council at Large, tell me what committees you'd like to sit on?
Well, honestly, I've been watching a lot of meetings at the Land Use and Legislative Committee. I'd love to be on that committee, because I think they do a lot of very important, important work and they make important decisions. Honestly, if I don't get on council, I would like to be a member of the Police Oversight and Advisory Board.
Really?
Yes, that is a huge priority of mine. I think it's a really big step towards what I really want, which is more police and neighborhood cooperation. I think that, and I think it'll help us move this, move it forward a lot and reduce crime and do a lot of the things I think we need to do in the city.
Okay, so you, you think you would serve well on that board? That's a passion of yours.
Yes, but that's only if I lose this election. But I'd rather not lose this election.
Absolutely. Well, but it's okay to, to look in both directions. You know, look as a winner and look as, not, I wouldn't call her the loser, but look at it as a second chancer, because you're always going to have another chance. And so, but you do have options, you know? If I don't get this, you have a B. I want this. So you're heard, young, the Police Advisory?
Yeah, the Police Reform and Advisory Board. It really depends what the name comes up with in the final. That's, that's one of the big yellow highlight.
Okay, cool. You guys, you heard Jeremy. He wants to serve, even if he doesn't serve you here, he wants to serve you over there. Jeremy just wants to serve. He has a passion to serve you, the citizens of Joliet. Thank you so much, Jeremy.
There's just, there's so much that can be done. I will assure you, I'm not going anywhere, Jeremy. No matter what, I will, I will keep serving the city in any way that I can.
Well, we don't need you to go anywhere, and your passion is showing me that you are not going anywhere. And we love that. We want someone that's young and passionate and energetic and, and willing to serve.
Please vote for Jeremy Brzicki for City Council at Large. I use Jeremy for Joliet a lot, because I'm the only Jeremy on the ballot that I know of. Just joking, I'm the only one. But I promise you, citizens of Joliet, I will do my very best to support you, to listen to you, whether you agree with me or not. And I will help the city. I will help to put us on a path to being the city champions again. That's what I see, and that's all I'm working towards.
And so Jeremy, your desire to be on the City Council seat. You see the divide on that council. What say you? Tell me, how are you going to unite and are you a uniter?
You know what, I will tell you that I've got my principles. I've got, they're right here on this piece of paper. The only, I would say, human rights are not an issue that can be negotiated on. But everything else, I'm willing to, I'm willing to debate, I'm willing to compromise. Actually, I love to debate. If you've got, if you've got an alternative point to mine, I want to hear it. I'm not here to go against the mayor, I'm not here to support the mayor. I'm here to support Joliet. And I don't think that, I don't think that the council war, the infighting is really helping us at all. But that does not mean that we should all think the same. We should have a divergence of opinion.
Well, you should agree to disagree, right?
Exactly. And then from that, because from there, that's where we get to the solution. We're going to have solutions that not everyone likes. But we, but if we can maintain an open dialogue, refrain from personal attacks, what? That's been crazy lately. And just keep to the issues and negotiate on there, then we can move forward. But if you're, if you're moving against them because you don't like them, then that's, that's shutting off all discussion. And that's just two, that's just two opposing sides that are not going to come together. But I do want to really reinforce the fact that I am a political outsider here in terms of seniority, as far as, as in. In terms of seniority of as far as residency goes, I am a baby. I've only been here seven years.
Oh, wow, okay.
But I am very experienced at bringing new perspectives. I'm very experienced at bringing a very thoughtful approach, and I will not let you down.
When is that voting day? I know it's early voting now, isn't it?
It is early voting now.
Okay, so tell us.
But yes, you can early vote now, you can request your mail-in ballot, or you can vote on April 6th. I am number three on the ballot, Jeremy for Joliet, Jeremy Frazicki. So, I really would like your consideration for your vote. But I also want to take a second to thank my campaign manager, Jamie Wood.
Okay.
I'd be lost without her.
Hi Jamie.
Thank you very much, Jamie. Thank you very much, everyone that's got one of my signs in your front, in your front yard. Anyone that you've, anyone that's told somebody else about me or has honestly even answered your door, even if you agree with me or not. It is such a boost to me when I find, when I talk to someone. That's why I love walking doors. I walk, I walk over a thousand easily at this point.
Don't care me, wow.
But I will say that it's my favorite part of it.
Yeah, boots on the ground.
Yeah, I enjoy forums for talking with the other candidates and talking with voters, but I really enjoy walking door to door.